I hereby call the Des Moines Regular City Council Meeting for November 9th to order, and I ask Councilmember Vic Pennington to lead us in the pledge.
To lead us to the pledge of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that it, all seven council members are present, and it is Councilmember Steinmet's birthday. Sorry, Harry, I had to do that to you, man.
We're gonna have a really short meeting?
Yeah. Good luck with that. Are there any correspondents not previously seen by council?
No additional correspondents.
Okay. It will now be time for public comment. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, or become boisterous threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. And you will have three minutes to speak, and with that, the first person to speak is Ms. Cassie Morales. Can I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Cassie. I'm here with my husband Nate and our dear friends and neighbors, Jeff and Maureen. We live just off of South 223rd, a couple streets down, Main Artier, off of Marine Reed Drive. We're here today because we're getting pretty increasingly concerned and fearful of the speed problem that we're facing on our street. I think the city has sort of recognized it's an issue. We have a speedometer down there at the bottom of the hill, and it just sort of blinks a pretty passive notice when you exceed speeds over thirty, thirty-five. During rush hour, we're seeing speeds upward of like sixty. And also with some of those drivers from the high school, some inexperienced drivers, even kind of, we had a bus, an out-of-service bus sign get run down last week. We have contacted law enforcement, and they are really gracious about coming to sit for about an hour or so, catch a couple of speeders, but it's not really like a long-term solution for safety on the street. So we're here today to just kind of discuss what the options are. We've discussed maybe like a speed bump would be a really great option, but we're just sort of curious what we can do if we need to take this to a transportation meeting or a safety committee, and kind of how we can get a long-term solution for this issue.
So it's just public comment tonight?
Okay.
Right? So we heard you and our staff taking that, and then we'll bring it up to where we place that concern.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morales. Moving on to Mr. Lloyd Lidle Jr.
Thank you, everybody. Mayor Mahoney, members of the council, and happy birthday, Harry. Let's see. I just wanted to comment a little bit on the Masonic Home Citizens Advisory Committee and city budget. First of all, a lot of us in the community have been working on preserving, revitalizing Masonic Home, as you know. And Barbara Mc... What's her name again? McMichael, thank you. And I have been kind of helping out a lot with that. And a lot of people, I think, emailed the council this week, and we understand your response. I know the city attorney has advised not to speak on it due to various reasons, which we completely understand and respect, but we do just want to let the city know and members of the public that Karen Kaiser, Tina Orwal, they're totally up for looking for state funds to help a preservation effort. We know Dow Constantine in King County has actually talked to the owner about it, and, you know, we just feel like the ball is just kind of there and starting to roll a little bit. So, you know, if you happen to talk to the owner, might just float that by him. You know, we're just looking to maybe see, help that seed grow a little bit. So, thank you for looking into that, because it does have broad public support. And, yeah, like when we were petitioning out there this summer, random people would come up. One military veteran came up and just said, you know, "I'd love to see music in the park concerts here." And another person came up, he's coming back from his job, and he stopped and said, "You know what? This building is just too beautiful to tear down." And it's just things like that, just, there's a lot of community buy-in to revitalize it. So, just want to put that out there. And also want to thank the city and council for restarting the Citizens Advisory Committee. Had the privilege of serving on that this year. And thank you to Mayor Mahoney for leading that. It was real great to work with everybody. And like Chuck here and a lot of the other people. Oh, and also, congrats to Yoshiko. Looking forward to working with you as well next year. And, yeah, it's a really good thing, that kind of transparency and communication, two-way, is a really good thing. Like to see that continue. Some things in the future, maybe, maybe a planning commission. Most other cities have that. It's a good way to get buy-in from the community. One of the phrases in the Citizens Advisory Committee was, "People who create something buy into it." You know, it's, you know, it gets the city in harmony. It's a, it's a good flow back and forth with the council and the public, and really positive. And, yeah, I also just wanted to put in a big shout-out for the Public Works Salmon Restorations around here. I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lidle. Moving on to Mr. George Pettibone.
Hello. Thank you for having us here again tonight. My comments in regards to the Masonic Home also. We have been here a couple times before, as you probably recall, and we feel that it is the iconic, iconic building on Puget Sound. It's the biggest, the grandest, monstrous building. You can see it from Tacoma, you can see it from Bainbridge Island, Moray Island, Vashon Island, every ship that goes by, every sailboat race that goes by, and we don't look forward to losing it. And we're not real, real thrilled with the idea that we can't find out any information. The developer bought it for eleven million dollars in 2019. It's pushing three and a half years since he bought it. There is no blueprints, there's no information, there's no drawings, there's no architectural rendering of what he wants to build. Nobody in this room has seen a good drawing of his plan of something to build. You give eleven million dollars to buy twenty-seven acres, you must have a plan. So it requires that he fills out an LUA. LUA stands for Land Use Application. Three simple words, Land Use Application. There is no land use information in the fourteen pages that he filled out. We might be stupid, but if you give somebody a picture and say, "This is the buildings I plan on building, this is how many buildings, this is how tall they are, this is what they'll do, this is what kind of buildings they'll be," we would all have information. We have zero information after three and a half years, and Land Use Application doesn't mean demolition. You can no longer get a building demolition permit all by itself. Everything goes through the SEPA process with the State of Washington, and everybody, at least all you guys, know what a SEPA checklist is. The SEPA checklist was filled out with gobbledygook. There's nothing but misinformation on it. There was no answering of the questions. He simply didn't want to finish filling out fourteen pages of questions that are required in order to get SEPA to cooperate with you. They want to know what you plan on building, and they don't have any idea, apparently. So, we're here to try and see for something new and fresh on the idea of a public-private program, and see if you guys could get some money from the State of Washington to help you to join together to save that building. I look forward to your progress on it. Thank you for letting us speak to you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettibone. Moving on to Annie and Josh Pansky.
Good evening, members of the Des Moines City Council. My name is Annie Pansky, and this is my husband, Josh. We are homeowners in the Woodmont Beach neighborhood. Recently, our family was fined more than one thousand dollars for renting out our pool without a business license. The fine came after we reached out to city staff seeking a short-term business license that we have now learned our city currently does not have. Our home has a pool poured in 1959 that we affectionately call the Yacht Club. Up until being fined, we are renting our pool to neighbors on a site called Swimply. Sharing our pool with others has been one of our greatest joys. And as our friend group expands, having a site like Swimply come along has saved us from the Google Doc that we were using. It gives our friends a place to donate to the cause, and as you know, everyone loves having a friend with the pool, and we've become that friend for many. We stand before you today to advocate for the creation of short-term rental licensing that would allow families like mine to continue renting out their private properties using platforms like Swimply, Airbnb, VRBO, Sniff Spot, and Neighbor. I believe that implementing a short-term rental license system is a fair and sensible approach to this issue, benefiting both the community and homeowners. By creating a license system for short-term rentals, the city can join with other local municipalities, embracing this emerging trend which is already highly active in the Des Moines community. A well-regulated short-term rental licensing system will help maintain the quality and reputation of our community. Properly managed short-term rentals can add to charm and appeal of our city, while unregulated ones might lead to issues like noise complaints or property neglect. By implementing a licensing system, the city can strike a balance between accommodating the needs of homeowners and protecting the interests of residents. Other cities have found that by implementing a licensing system for short-term rentals, safety and accountability is enhanced. Proper oversight minimizes risks. It also facilitates a streamlined process for guests, hosts, and neighbors, ensuring an experience for everyone involved. In addition, it's important to note that having a licensing system in place would generate tax revenue for the city. By requiring hosts to obtain licenses, the city can collect taxes on these short-term rentals, which can be reinvested into our community, supporting public services and infrastructure improvements. I would like to emphasize that our community is strongly supporting the continuation of short-term rentals, including our pool. We have personally collected more than one hundred and sixty-five signatures in the last seven days from community members right here in Des Moines who are advocating for our pool, the Yacht Club, to remain open. This demonstrates the widespread local support for short-term rentals and the positive impact that our family has made on our community by sharing our pool. In conclusion, we urge you, this council, to consider the benefits of creating a short-term rental license system that would enable homeowners to rent out their properties, like pools, safely and responsibly. This system can support homeowners in tough economic times, promote safety, stimulate the local economy, enhance the overall quality of life in our city, and generate much-needed tax revenue. We believe that by working together to find a fair and balanced solution, we can address concerns related to short-term rentals while allowing responsible homeowners to continue sharing their private properties with others. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope that the city council will take steps to create a short-term licensing system in the near future that works for both the residents and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, the Panskys. And FYI, I think you're aware of this, the ECON committee has it on their work plan for 2024 to address this. All right, Mr. Lynn Scott, you are the last speaker tonight in this regard.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council, everybody else is joining in tonight. I want to comment on a couple of things. The Marina Sut project got announced. It's on, it's online, and I want to say that was great. It got data out there, and I've told people, this is the first time the cities actually put it out and said, "This is the project." It's got an anticipated schedule to it. It also had a survey, but the response time to the survey, a little too short. It was like fourteen days, and, and many people that I've talked to missed the opportunity to provide some comments. And so I do hope that it's not a one-and-done kind of public input you're looking at with that survey. We do need a chance to have Q and A and some discussions about the steps. In addition, when the steps were announced here in the council meeting, they talked about the 223rd Street improvements. And I think they said it was going to be lagging by about three weeks, and we'd see another kind of announcement online. It's a separate project, yet the two are really linked, and it's hard for us to visualize what that area is going to look like until we see both of them. So I hope we have that public meeting with some discussion after both those are out so that we can talk completely about that area and what it's going to look like. I think it's going to be great. Citizen Advisory Committee, I was really looking forward to the last meeting and listening and getting in on it, because they were going to talk about the budget. The budget's been addressed here, going to be addressed tonight. It's complex, so I was really looking forward to a chance to listen in and have another look and peek at what's going on there. The video worked, the audio didn't work, and then I've been told, well, that was kind of a decision made. And if it was, that's a bad decision, because that's a place where, once again, the neighborhoods can check in and get informed. So we missed an opportunity with that. And I don't know if it was, you know, a decision for some reason or not, but I view it as a missed opportunity. The last item I want to talk about was just this one-time money issue that's going to, there's going to be a presentation on it tonight. One-time money has been kind of set aside and prevented from getting commingled with the general fund, so you guys understand that really well. I, I think we need to learn to live without that one-time money going into the budget. And everybody knows we should, but it's finding the discipline to do it. And I'm additionally concerned, because I've heard when the, when the bonds were released, that no general fund money was going to service the debt on the bonds. One-time money would, or revenues from like the parking gates and that thing. So I'm worried that in 2024, do we have a forecast that says we're going to have enough one-time money to service the debt and also support maybe some things on the general, general fund? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn Scott. I was just informed, just so you know, even though the survey closed because the process begins, that everybody, all citizens of you pass on, they're welcome to send emails on feedback and so forth, to, and continue to send those to the city, and those will be included. Okay? Thank you. I'm sorry. And Chief Administration Officer will put a link out for that. All right? All right, so the next step we have is the committee chair reports. We have only one, the Environmental Committee Chair Nutty. You have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. The only thing that was on the agenda, other than the approval of minutes, was the update on our NPDES permit. It's a mouthful for an acronym. It's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. The city current, the city's current permit expires July 31st, 2024, and on August 20, on August 1st, 2024, a new five-year permit will be issued and become effective. Draft permit changes include additional requirements for stormwater planning, public education, outreach, public involvement mapping, illicit discharge, stormwater management, and operations and maintenance. Specific significant changes include a new focus on tree canopy as a stormwater tool, stormwater retrofit projects, street sweeping, and removal of PCBs. Staff are monitoring the rollout of these requirements and will be returning next year to present the final 2024 permit language. And just a follow-up to that is that construction projects are required to get a NPDES permit for stormwater runoff, cities are, and counties are. So, this is, this just manages what's dumped into our streams and helps with our stormwater management program. So, more to come on that, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutty. Will the Chief Administrative Officer please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, mayor. Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Small Business Saturday Proclamation. Item four, 2024 Human Services Advisory Committee Funding Recommendations Amendment. And item five, Des Moines Creek Business Park West Master Park Hearing Examiner Review. And that concludes the consent agenda, mayor.
Councilmember Nutty?
I move to approve. The consent agenda is read.
Of second?
Second.
I have second from Deputy Mayor Buckston. Is there a council member that wishes to pull an item? Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. I would like to pull item four, Human Services Advisory.
Okay. Thank you. We will be, be on the consent agenda, we'll be approving items one, two, three, and five. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous, all right? Before we get to item four, I need to read this proclamation really quick. Excuse me for a sec. Whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently thirty-two point five million businesses in the United States. And whereas, small business, businesses employ forty-six point eight percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, seventy-nine, seventy-nine percent of consumers in the United States value the contribution small businesses make in their community. And whereas, ninety-six percent of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently-owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. And whereas, ninety-two percent of companies planning promotions on small businesses, on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And whereas, fifty-nine percent of the small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas, Des Moines supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And now, therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support, to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed this day, ninth of November, Mayor Matt Mahoney. And I would just add an amen. Please do business locally. It helps. All right. Moving on to item four, the 2024 Human Services Advisory Committee Funding Recommendations Amendment. Mr. Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm simply lodging a protest, and I will be voting no on this, and I am simply giving my reasoning so that, you know, there isn't like, "Oh, you voted against stuff." I do consider the Human Services Advisory budget to be essential. I am absolutely thrilled at the high-dollar number this year. However, it does require one-time money, and I believe that human services programs are so essential that we must find a way to, to fund them sustainably at this level going forward, and we have failed to do that. Further, we had forty-eight applicants, but twenty-five awards, and the process needs to show the council all the applicants. We also do not provide any kind of ongoing reporting, I am sure, or even a narrative on these successful awards. I'm sure they're all wonderful organizations, however, it is in our interest and the public's interest to have some idea of the work that each of these groups are doing, not only for the education of the council, but also the poor, the county all recognize that we're having trouble getting new organizations into the game. People, we need to get new groups stood up and into the field, otherwise you tend to get the same churn over and over again. And these are all worthy organizations, but you have to, you just have to add new blood to the system. And without more information about how you, how the programs work and the kind of product that they are generating, that is really challenging. I'm not asking for anything new. In fact, back, going back to the nineties, the city council used to put up quarterly work reports for all our committees, not just, you know, not just human services. And we don't do that, and so it's a little uncomfortable for me to just get a report, you know, basically five days ahead of time on something that I consider so essential to the city. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to go with Deputy Mayor Buckston, and then Councilmember Steinmetz.
So, that was not the issue that we're talking about here tonight. And I do want to add a little bit of information about the Human Services Advisory. There is a committee of citizens from the city that has been given the responsibility of all of the work that the council member did mention. They do come and give us reports of whatever we ask for. They do, we do have a liaison to Human Services Advisory Committee, which is me. If any council member ever does have a question about what goes on in the committee and the vetting process, we do talk about it at least once a year, about where the committee is, what they're doing, how much they've allocated, a list of agencies. When we're talking about the rollover of new agencies, many of the agencies that we are funding currently are already new. That, that funding continues to grow every year with our general fund, because we have allocated one percent of our general fund. So whatever that is, if it grows, that fund grows, which means the recipients grow, the number of recipients. And we put that into place only a handful of years ago. When I first got elected, it was just in the double digits, this fund. We have grown it to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars just in about four years. That is a huge number of new recipients. And that, and it's a two-year budget, it's a two-year application schedule. So that means it's only turned over like twice practically since I've been elected. So, which that means is if you are awarded a certain amount per year, you get that for two years. So we only take applications every other year. I guess what I'm saying is, the city is working very hard to be responsible with the allocation and also to put appropriate responsibility on these citizen volunteers who are doing a magnificent job in not only their allocation decisions, but we have a, an entire second year of the cycle is an accountability process where every single agency who is awarded a grant is visited. They are required to give reports back to us. So I just want to say, there is an accountability process that has been created here up at the dais, and we have a representative, and it's, I think it's a fabulous system. I wish the entire county would operate this way. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinmetz?
Well, I appreciate the review of how the Human Services Committee works to make its recommendations. The only thing in front of us tonight is a change in one of their recommendations, and that is they're recommending the transferring of fifteen thousand dollars in funding from Catholic Community Services to St. Stevens Housing. St. Stevens will facilitate using those funds for rental assistance and eviction prevention. So in other words, they will help people from becoming homeless, you know? And that's all that we're being asked to approve, and that was the recommendation of the committee. I haven't heard anything that suggests that this recommendation is off-base in any way or involves agencies that, you know, are unworthy. So, I'm not sure why we're spending a lot of time talking about just a simple amendment to their recommendations and approving that. I would support it.
Councilmember Nutty?
Thank you, council, thank you, mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz, for the explanation. for the explanation. So I didn't have to go into that. With that, I move to approve the 2024 Human Services Funding Recommendation Amendment and authorize the city manager to sign a contract reflecting the amendment.
You have a second. Second, I'll take second from Councilmember Steinmetz. You were close there, Deputy Mayor. All right. Any further discussion before I take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of item four, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxiger, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris. Motion passes six one. All right. I will now open the public hearing for 2024 property tax levies. Staff will provide a presentation. I believe Mr. Friend, you're putting it. My friend, Mr. Friend?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Jeff Friend, Finance Director. 2024 Property Tax Levy. Okay, new for 2024, our proposed property tax levy amount would be $5,639,570. This amount includes a one point, a one percent allowable increase of $55,331. The overall assessed valuation within the city of Des Moines decreased by about $219 million to $6,214,112,635. So that is a decrease of 3.2%. So the natural question, I think, that arises at this point is if we're, if the valuation decreased, why is there an increase? And the reason for that is that the formula for calculating a levy is not based on the valuation. It's based on a levy amount that King County provides us, which is actually labeled highest levy basis since 1985. So that's where the formula begins and is actually not based on the valuation. The city had an additional $32 million in new construction, adding $27,486 to the overall property tax base. And the proposed tax rate for 2024 is an estimated 90.75 cents per thousand of assessed value, an increase of 4.2% from the current levy for 2023, which was 86.47%. So the way it works is we do the calculation based on the formula provided by the county and how every district does their levy formula. And then you take that and compare it to the assessed valuation, and that determines the rate per thousand. Okay, this is the history of Des Moines property tax levies. So you can see in 2016, it was $1.65 per thousand of assessed valuation and has been dropping since then. In fact, I think you can't even have $1.65 anymore against the law. $1.51 in 2017, and then dropping all the way down to the 86 and a half cents in 2023. So you can see it kind of stabilizes a little bit since then, going up just to 90 cents in 2024. So when you look at your property tax bill, you are not taxed on your property taxes by just one taxing authority or district. There are several. So this chart shows here in a sample property tax bill that really the city of Des Moines is only the, like, number five as far as the percentage of your property taxes and where it goes. So the percentage total for the city, it really makes up about eight percent of a property tax bill, which you see with the little arrow pointing to that little sliver. The top two, the local school district and Washington State schools combined make up at about 58% of your property tax bill, which you can see with the large green and large red in the pie chart. These are the suggested motions in this slide.
It is now time for the public comment portion of the public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this particular subject? Second time, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Third and final time, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Seeing none, no one has signed up to speak. Council, do you have any questions? I repeat, this is for questions only. Not seeing any? All right. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 23-053, determining the amount of funds to be raised by ad valorem taxes for the year 2024 for the general city expenditures.
Do you have a second? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Buxton. Any discussion before I take a vote on the motion? Deputy Mayor Buxton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very simply, we're incredibly stretched with supply chain and labor issues with regard to finishing projects and securing a great staff in our city. But it's every city, really. And so notably officers, really, in my opinion. So this is a nominal amount compared to our entire budget. We worked hard to give a reprieve during COVID, just to help people out. And so I think this is a, it's a reasonable ask. It's what every city needs to do right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting?
I'd also like to piggyback on that. Our city has done very well. Most cities have brought about more challenges for themselves throughout the last three years. And I think this is a reasonable ask for us. It's a small dollar amount. But we've managed to manage it very well over the last few years and have not used this ability. So I think we're at a position where we can and should. So that's my comments.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, I think that, you know, yikes, here we go, raising taxes again is the first instinct of most of the public when they hear something like this, without realizing and because it's not right in front of you, that during the last several years, we simply, the council has not. You know, this is my second year on the council. So we have declined to exercise the one percent increase that we can exercise, and that's what we're doing now. We are heading into a period when we're going to need a little bit more if we're going to maintain the level of services that you've come to expect. And this is in part how we do it. And I think this is a well reasoned, thought out approach to gaining some money without having a huge impact on your wallets. So, thank you.
I would just add that smaller cities, the one percent cap was one thing that hit us all pretty hard. It makes it a little bit more difficult for smaller cities. I understand what the, what the intent was, but I think smaller cities were a victim of it. You're going to hear something and a theme throughout the night that, that the cost of goods, that inflation and the cost of having a good staff has gone up. But our revenues have stagnated as, as all cities are dealing with. And this is one of those cases where this is a small ask. We're talking about just a little over $100,000, folks. In the scheme, as Deputy Mayor Buxton put it, it's, it's not even a percent essentially of the total money that we need for the revenue to support the city. It's a reasonable ask, and I will support it. Is there any other comments before we go to vote? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion to enact draft ordinance number 23-053, raise your hand. And I see all seven of us. So the motion passes seven zero. All right. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 23-052, determining the amount of funds to be raised by ad valorem taxes for the year 2024 for the general city expenditures.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Any discussion before I take a vote on this motion? Seeing, seeing none, it's 23-052. Yes. All right. I'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of ordinance 23-052, raise your right hand. And the motion passes seven zero.
Mayor, I'm just looking at this now.
Was they backwards?
No. The motion needed to be a move to enact draft ordinance number 23052, authorizing the increase in ad valorem taxes for the year 2024 for general city expenditures. So the-
Do you want us to remake the motion?
Yes. If someone has their packet, does someone have their packet out?
It'll just take me a second. I'll remake the motion.
Oh, I have it right here. Okay, go ahead.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 23-052, authorizing the increase in the ad valorem taxes for the year 2024 for the general expenditures. Is that what you're looking for, city attorney?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
Can I have a second with Deputy Mayor Buxton? Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none? Okay, this is for realsies this time. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. All right. I will now, now open the public hearing for the 2024 Preliminary Annual Budget for the second reading. And our friend, Mr. Friend, will give the staff presentation.
Yeah, I've already introduced myself, so we'll do that again. This is the presentation for the 2024 Preliminary Annual Budget. I actually believe Michael has the first couple of slides, but I can handle it. Okay. Macroeconomic dynamics. So the first couple of slides address the economic situation that the city is in, as well as pretty much every other city in the country. So the first point is the inflationary pressure. So as the mayor mentioned, the rising costs of goods and services. See, Michael wants to do this here. It's in your wheelhouse.
Convenient cough. I apologize. We went through this last, last week fairly in depth. I think it's already been called out that there's inflationary pressure in the country. The Federal Reserve is trying to address that. The way that they've addressed that is by raising interest rates up to a point now that it appears there's a pause. The raising of interest rates is to try and calm economic activity, reduce it somewhat so it reduces inflationary pressure. That's been a problem for cost of goods, for cost of services, for COLAs, for everything else. The strange thing about the economy currently, we've talked about before, is that this is one of those times where you see inflationary pressure, actions taken to depress economic activity, not in a negative way, but in a manner that's consistent with, so that inflation doesn't erode the value of things. And at the same time, the labor market remains robust, and it's very difficult to recruit people for jobs depending on the types of jobs. So we could get anywhere from 60 to 70 applicants for a job, all up to one applicant. And it all just depends on the nature of the job and the nature of the labor market at that moment. Yeah, so economic impacts, we talked about cost of goods, robust nature of labor market, difficulty in recruiting for specific jobs, the importance of retaining staff, which I think we've done a pretty good job at. And higher interest rates have resulted in a decline in the housing market by providing more difficult obstacles to ownership. This results in decrease in the city's REIT. So all of these impacts in the macroeconomic cycle ripple through city government and through our ability to finance the, our operations. Next. So the focus is to, you know, have sustainability in the general fund. And that's always been the focus for the last number of years that I've been involved. And certain members of the council have been with us since the beginning of this process, to establish self-sufficiency and sustainability. And we've done that. And a couple of examples of that have been, the past four years, we've received the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in the preparation of our comprehensive financial documents. We received a three-step bond upgrade in 2018 as a result of our financial practices, which is now transferred to the cost of the bond that we just issued, saving our taxpayers and our city a lot of money in interest rates because we are financially solvent. Looking for stable revenue, there's the red light money, tax revenue, the ARPA money, which is going to run out. And, you know, the ARPA money is a little bit like having a drug that you get addicted to. I think the comment was made that that's not an appropriate financial strategy. And so we've got to find ways to, to substitute for those funds. But those funds, lest we forget, were utilized to hire more police officers, to enhance our park system, to enhance our emergency responses to people in need, all kinds of positive things. And those are going to run out at the end of 2026. So we're already anticipating, how do we address the shortfall that potentially is imminent, but hopefully can be avoided? So we have also increased costs, SCORE, which is problematic and which we're working with them to try to reduce what our costs are. WCIA Insurance, their insurance pool was apparently seriously depleted. And so insurance costs have gone up significantly. Salary and benefits related to contractual obligations to retention of employees. For this to be a stable work environment, we've taken steps, which you'll see later in the budget presentation. Fund 105, the development fund specifically, is designed to address kind of gyrations in the economy and allow us to provide stable services to developers in our community. And then also vehicle replacement is an increased cost, and we need those for police vehicles and other vehicles in the city to enhance safety. Strategies, we will talk more about this in a minute, but we are looking at creating or recommending to council, creating an enterprise fund for events and facilities. And that means that that function in the city would operate more like business, and it would be accounted for financially as a business. We've recommended repurposing some of the ARPA money and putting it into fund balance to support the solvency of the city. We've had very limited additions of FTEs. There's only two new FTEs in the 2024 budget. We tried to be very strategic in the use of vacancies and allow vacancies to roll up somewhat where it's not detrimental to operations. To retain the one-time sales tax in the general fund for a period of time, specifically, the request is for this year in 2024, and we'll see whether we come out next year. The property tax, we just had that discussion, reduce the cost of SCORE, and reduce supplies and services expenditures. And that's difficult based on what the nature of those acquisitions of services and supplies are. Now I'll give it back to Jeff with all the exciting financial news. So, thank you.
So this is the general fund forecast. The middle column, you'll see it says budget 2024. So you'll see the operating revenues and expenditures at the top, the beginning fund balance that we'd project to be about $5.2 million. And then the after operations, you can see in the red there, the $1.6 million. So that's operating, but that's also structural. So then underneath that is the one-time activities. And so you can see the, the revenues there. There's one point, a little over 1.8 million of ARPA funds in the budget being transferred into the general fund. And you'll see the one-time expenditures of 611,000 of ARPA funds as well. And then the change in the fund balance in bold and black at the bottom is a decrease of $97,000 with ending fund balance about 5.1. And then to talk about aligning the revenues and expenditures of the fund, you'll notice in the first column, under the current year budget, the change in fund balance is a decrease of almost $2.3 million. And so- And so, um, we feel that that's not a sustainable practice, and so we wanted to, um, balance the budget as as close as, um, as best as we could. The other notable thing in the forecast, also you see the bottom row of numbers, uh, ending reserve percent. So the city code, um, has includes the, uh, commitment to, uh, that the ending fund balance will be, um, at minimum of sixteen point six seven percent of operating expenditures. And so that's what those percentages are there now. So, um, after the twenty twenty, you know, after twenty twenty-four, you know, we're projecting twenty point one three percent, which is above the sixteen point six seven, but if you look to the right, you can see it dips down below, uh, that sixteen point six seven, uh, percent number with thirteen point one two percent in twenty twenty-five, and then having a decrease year after year. We spoke about repurposing ARPA funds, and so these are, uh, ARPA projects that either, um, had not started or have finished, um, and had remaining dollars. And so that's, uh, a little over one point two million dollars of available ARPA funds that can be used to help close the gap in the general fund. Okay, um, now we're going to speak about the strategy with the events and facility rentals and the enterprise fund. Uh, so this slide shows the history of this department in the general fund going back ten years. So you have the year, the revenue, the expense, and then the income. And it's never good to see income numbers in red. So, um, every year, um, events and facility rentals has lost money. As, you know, twenty sixteen, you can see, came close to breaking even, it lost almost eleven thousand dollars. Uh, but then the following years, uh, it was a, you know, you see a decrease of three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then in twenty twenty, you know, the pandemic came along, so you see revenue just dropped down to sixteen thousand because everything shut down. And then our year-to-date numbers this year, so far, we've had revenue of, uh, two hundred ninety-six thousand and expenses of five hundred and forty-one. So if you take all of those losses year to year and add them together, it comes to be, uh, about one, a little over one point nine million dollars. In the twenty twenty-four budget, we have operating revenue of, um, we're budgeting for four hundred and eighty-four thousand in revenue, and then expenses, you can see is greater than that, salaries and benefits at about six hundred and ten thousand, supplies, uh, ninety-seven thousand, and services about three hundred and four thousand, so a a decrease of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So this is part of the enterprise fund strategy. What's not shown here is non-operating revenue of seven hundred and fifty thousand from the bond. But this is, this is in the budget, but the budget is a long process. And so, you know, early in the process, we look at numbers, and then, you know, finance people like trends. And so the revenue number is really based on the historical trend. So if you go back and look at the history here, you can see, like, well, we hit four hundred and nineteen in twenty, in the previous year, twenty twenty-two, or two years ago, uh, according to the budget, you know, we got three hundred in twenty twenty-one. So that revenue number is in line with history, but it, and that's what we budgeted, and so we own that, but it doesn't necessarily reflect the potential of what can be done in, um, events and facilities.
Jeff, just one, um, clarification. So you referenced the bond, in fact, it would be a loan.
Oh, I meant to say loan.
Yeah, from Stormwater Fund.
Sorry.
Sure.
Okay, goals, um, for events and facility rentals in its own enterprise fund is transparency. So those numbers we saw historically might have been surprising, and that might be largely due to the fact that it's been buried in the general fund, and it's not really been given the spotlight. So having in its own enterprise fund, uh, which we can do, because an enterprise fund is where, um, if you have an activity that's where you're taking, collecting fees from an external user, and you're, you want to match the revenue and expenditures, you have the option of putting it in its own enterprise fund where it's treated as a business. And we think that calling it out and separating it, uh, gives it transparency. And then with that, um, accountability. So if it's acting as its own fund, uh, we can assure appropriate chargebacks for establishing real costs as basis for pricing. So when we establish a price, we know all the costs that can go into that price if the event has, you know, it uses police services or other city services, that can be built into the price, and so that we know we're covering our costs. Also, we want to maximize the revenue of poten- revenue potential of city assets, um, because we feel like there's a lot of potential still remaining, uh, to capitalize on. And then we, uh, want to ease the burden of general funds' fund balance. So events and facility rental activities would be funded by user fees and not subsidized by the general fund. Because if you think about all those losses over ten years, what would it be like if we were able to retain that one point nine million dollars? We'd have a much healthier fund balance in the general fund. Okay, so now that those are the goals, the strategies, um, as we mentioned, this is not a bond, it's a loan. A three-year, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan from surface water management at three percent interest guaranteed by the general fund, and the spending plan would be that they could use two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, per year. So this would really be to help them absorb the costs in the startup year and really have, you know, let's essentially seed money to start, uh, the fund. Because right now it's a brand-new fund, if it was to be approved, there would be no cash in that fund, so we have to have some kind of cash resources. Second strategy would be restructure the fee schedule. We want to make sure that it's consistent with private, the private sector market, um, that we're not charging too little, uh, and letting, you know, money get away. Appropriate discounts for community events. So, um, in talking with staff, I learned, like, there's one group in August gets seventy-five percent discount, uh, for a weekend. I mean, that's, that's a really big discount, so we need to look at what discounts are being given out, um, and so that we're not collecting twenty-five percent when we could be collecting much more. And that's, of course, retaining goal of self-sufficiency. So if we're, we're not against discounts, but if we're responsible with them, then the business can be more self-sufficient. And then analyze inter-local agreements. We don't want to have inter-local agreements that allow other districts or parties, um, cheap access to our assets when we could be, um, collecting fees at a higher rate than, um, we would if we have a bad inter-local agreement. Also maximize facility rentals, and so this is a list of, uh, facilities. So, uh, the beach park, field house, activity center, Soundview Park, and others. So we would be expanding, not just, we would not only be charging more for the assets, but we'd be expanding the number of, uh, facilities that we would be renting out. So, um, there's, you know, it's kind of like taxes, you can increase the rate or increase the base, and and we would be doing both with the rentals, increasing the rates and adding to what we're renting. And then lastly, uh, improved marketing. So we can have uniformed branding, um, we can get involved with trade shows, and then also marketing through the RTA and Seattle South Side. So, you know, their staff has been looking at all these and has, you know, had had a number of, um, creative ideas. Okay, moving on, um, what else is in the budget? We have the twenty twenty-four cost of living adjustment. Uh, the Teamsters and Police Guild, uh, have in the budget four percent as a cost of living adjustment, and general and not represented employees are at three percent. Um, this shows the general fund revenue structure. Uh, the, the column on the end is the twenty twenty-four budget. The percentages show how much of total revenue is represented by that particular revenue source. Uh, you can see property tax is our largest revenue source at twenty-one point five six percent, um, utility taxes at seventeen point oh five percent, and, uh, retail sales tax at sixteen point five four percent. So we expect, you know, we're, we're going to levy the five, uh, point six three nine million, uh, we're projecting about four point three in sales tax, and then, uh, about four point five million in utility taxes. Other categories of revenue, uh, that are down below the tax section is licenses and permits, intergovernmental, which those are grants, and so, you know, that can fluctuate. Charges for services, uh, fines, uh, red light running, you can see, as we said, some of our income is stable. Uh, we tend, we expect that to pretty much stay at one point two million. And then the bottom line is just interest, uh, revenue, rents, other miscellaneous transfers in. So overall, um, revenue, uh, we are budgeting about twenty-six point one five three million in, uh, general fund revenue. Okay, development fund forecast, so we have a few more forecasts to show. Again, this is the twenty twenty-four budget in the middle there, uh, beginning fund balance of one point five two one. Uh, and I believe when this fund was established, it was established with about one point five million, uh, in funds from the general fund. Net activity, uh, after revenues and expenditures is, um, budgeted at an eight hundred and four thousand dollar loss, so that you'll see the ending fund balance, uh, at the end of twenty twenty-four is about seven hundred and sixteen thousand. And of course, um, there is a red section to the right, uh, which shows, uh, negative fund balance, so that would be an issue that we, uh, need to address. Did you want to add to that, Michael, at all, or?
You watch, we get to the red. The, the, the point, I think what's important to remember is the development fund was designed to deal with, um, highs and lows in the economy to re- to retain a stable workforce, stable, uh, in terms of planners, building inspectors, the building department, all of that, so that development could continue. Because typically what happens with local government is that as the economy ramps up, people are hired, and then as the economy starts to decrease in activity, people are let go. And there's always a lag period in there with with government being a little behind the curve, where you never quite hire enough for the good times, and then you cut and you're behind the eight ball for the, for the bad times. As things start to pick up, you have to go through that whole process again. This is designed to avoid that. And we fully anticipated, I mean, we went through three years of COVID, which was very difficult to retain our workforce, but we did that in order for it to be now in place as things are picking up, and things are picking up, except for the, the problem mentioned earlier ma- in the macro side relative to the cost of capital, the cost of investment. So investment is somewhat constrained. So this is a strategy that we are, we're solvent for twenty twenty-four, but we're going to have to look at how we assure solvency in the out years.
And this forecast is a forecast, uh, for the Marina Fund. Same format as the other forecasts. So operating income in the twenty twenty-four budget is eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And as you see in the middle there, there's a capital improvement. So, uh, having mentioned the bond, uh, there is a bond project in the Marina, which is the dock replacements of docks L, M, and N. And, and you can see in the revised budget twenty twenty-three, in the second column, there's twelve point seven more, uh, seven, four million dollars of bond proceeds, uh, in the revenue side. So those, that money came in, eh, last month, and then you'll see those, uh, expenditures in twenty twenty-four, uh, in the budget at seven point, almost seven point seven million dollars, and then again in, in twenty twenty-five. So though the net activity, uh, for the twenty twenty-four budget shows almost eight million dollars, well, that's because there's capital expenditures for a large project there. Uh, and speaking of capital, you can also see down below, uh, where the Marina Dock Replacement is broken out, uh, with the six point four four seven million dollars and the, uh, seven point oh four seven million. So that section down there breaks out the different projects that are in the budget for the Marina. And lastly, uh, the Surface Water Management Forecast, again, it's the same format, they have a lot more capital, uh, improvements they're working on. So their beginning fund balance, uh, for twenty twenty-four is about nine point nine million dollars. That's, um, and that's what we would call is unrestricted, uh, fund balance. Their operating income would be about one point one million dollars, and then, uh, the total change, you can see a decrease of one point five, but I also would, uh, point again to the capital improvements of three point two five million, um, which are broken out below. So this is, um, an enterprise fund that is, uh, again, fee-driven, uh, pay-as-you-go, and self-sufficient. And then this is the motion, uh, slide. I just want to say, um, that we did get to do a presentation for the Citizens Advisory Committee, and, uh, we also met with, uh, council members over the past week. And this is, the budget process is a long, month-long process, and so we appreciate the feedback that we've gotten and all the work by other departments, uh, because it is a true collaboration over a long period of time. And that's, that would conclude my presentation.
Thanks, Jeff. Is there anything else in the presentation? Right. Seeing that no one signed up to speak, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Second time, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Third and final time, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak?
So I just want to clarify that.
Oh, so Ms. Savores, uh, say who you are, what city you live in, you don't have to give us your address, and then you can, go ahead.
I'm Marnie Savores, I live down and around the corner from this building here. I just want to clarify, um, we, we refurbished, um, a lot of, uh, buildings down in the beach park area, and we must have accounted for those, and we were going to promote and advertise and fill that, and once we took on that project, we just didn't follow through. Does that sound about right? And now we're going to finally start marketing that? Because it seems like we had that ability all this time, and now we're going to give more money to do that? That's what it sounds like to me. Because we could be promoting all these parks and the Beach Park Center and the audit, Beach Park Auditorium. We just haven't had the resources to do that, and so that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to allow us to promote that more? Is that a correct understanding?
I think a slightly more correct understanding is that all those facilities are currently being utilized, being leased, being rented. We're really pleased to have Alvin Ely, um, Summer Dance Theater here for kids. That's an ongoing contract for five years, uses the beach park. Beach park is used for weddings, for events, for all kinds of things. We think that not only could, for example, the Founder's Lodge perhaps be renovated somewhat and made accessible, but also we think that we can maximize revenue from those resources you mentioned and from others. So the purpose of this would be to generate more revenue from the facilities and assets the city has.
But we had that ability to begin with, prior to this fund that we're going to create, right?
I absolutely agree with you. I think that part of the, the premise is that we are not maximizing our revenue to this point, and we'd like to do that.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Mr. Lynn Scott.
Point of order, this is public comment, not a dialogue. I'm, I'm sorry to sound, because I know that everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Go ahead, Mr. Lynn Scott.
I live here in Des Moines, and I, I'm talking about, uh, the new enterprise fund as well. So in, in some of these locations, we have, uh, as I, like Field House, we actually have some, uh, city employment off, employee offices in that location. And, and there might be other spots that also have use, uh, by the city. So when the city uses those, will they be paying a rate? In, in other words, will that be considered in the overall rate? And, uh, its utilization? This relates to something I saw in our business when I was working, where we had facilities we used as a company, but we had excess capacity, and we would sell those, we call them accommodation sales, but they were all swept in together. So in other words, we knew that, um, we were using those buildings or those facilities, and, uh, they all got swept into the overall, um, evaluation of, uh, use and, uh, revenue and expense. So I just don't know how this is going to work. I'm, I'm, and I, I don't know that we, have we done and taken a look at, um, a real market analysis? Is there, uh, a, a demand out there? And has that been? And has that been swept into kind of the business plan? Comments, questions? I'm not sure what that was. Dialogue?
Thank you, Mr. Lynn Scott. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, now I will open the floor to council. This is for questions only. Councilmember Harris, you may begin.
Mr. Friend, are you prepared to provide an alternative budget should the enterprise fund not be approved?
So if the enterprise fund is not approved, then I would presume that the budget in its present form is not approved, and therefore, yes, we would have to move the events and facilities, costs, revenue and expenditures into the general fund.
Okay, but you're prepared to do that, you know, such that we're able to meet the legal timeline of whatever.
Yeah, I think the legal timeline is December 31st for passage of a budget.
Okay, but you could do that theoretically.
Yep.
That's all I got.
I just want to clarify that answer. We could pass the budget tonight without the enterprise fund, correct?
I think, yes, I think so, if we have that motion.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, let me, let me pose a couple of questions you may have heard earlier. Will there be charged back for the city uses under, with the proposed enterprise fund?
Yeah, so they would be paying, and in the budget, there is inter-fund charges for insurance, another category I can't pull up, but they would also be subject to the indirect cost allocation. And if there were, let's say, police services or whatnot, then we would be able to charge that, yeah, through the enterprise fund.
And given that the facility seemed to have operated at a deficit for a long time, that has been subsidized then, or part of the general fund has paid that difference, am I correct? And, but that hasn't been strictly accountable? Or how is?
Essentially, when you look at the structure of the general fund and where the positives are and the negatives and all of that, that's all incorporated just by the nature of the fact, the general fund subsidizing the events and facilities.
But this, but by creating an enterprise fund, it'll allow us to see that more clearly, whether it's operating at a negative and whether the general fund has to fund it.
Absolutely. The general fund is a combination of various departments, like police, you know, community development, finance, HR, you know, parks, and then you have events and facilities in there. So when an accountant looks at it, it's a large fund, lots of different, you know, revenues, expenditures, and so you can't go, oh, I see how they're doing. Because you see how the general fund is doing overall. And maybe if you have a report showing a department, you could, but, but just in the grand scheme of things, if you have anything broken out and isolated, it's much easier for the public to see it, it's much easier for us to see it. And so that would be where the transparency would be.
And then lastly, has there been any estimate of how much we may be leaving on the table or not accessing in revenue opportunities by lack of proper marketing of our facilities at this point?
I'd say that there's been a, what's been reviewed has been the processes that have been lacking. I can't assign a dollar amount to it necessarily.
But we could, per earlier discussion, estimate that somewhere between 200 and 500,000 dollars, at least initially.
Annually?
Annually, yeah. That we could try and recapture.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. So with that last comment, city manager, I guess my first question is, is $750,000 has been allocated as a loan to the fund? So is the expectation that it's going to take three years for the enterprise fund to become solvent at 250,000 dollars a year as the ability to borrow, so to speak, or use?
That would absolutely be the intention. I think that the protection for the stormwater fund is that that 250,000 dollars would be used per year for three years. If at the end of three years, it looked like this process wasn't working, that loan would be paid back to the stormwater fund from the general fund. Because essentially, what that loan does is relieve the general fund of 3/4 million dollars of subsidy. And if it didn't work, it would all resolve back to the general fund where it is anyways, but this would be a creative way to try and address that.
So I think you answered it, but then the dissolution of the enterprise fund, the enterprise, would go away if they weren't able to become solvent, and we would recapture them under the general fund? Is that what the expectation would be?
That's what the expectation, the expectation would be that it would be successful, but if it wasn't successful, we would be no worse off than we are to start with.
Okay, I'll save the rest of it for my comments afterwards. Thank you.
I saw Councilmember Harris for a second time, and then I see Deputy Mayor Buxton.
With regard to the bonds, we just, all that money, is that money invested in some sort of interest-bearing vehicle? And if so, what is the rate of return on that?
Point of.
Bond or loan, Council?
Yeah.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the bond sale for the Marina and all of that stuff. I mean, is that?
Yeah, I can answer that.
Go ahead.
No, because there are arbitrage rules, so if we invest it in, I mean, and it's 26 million dollars, especially with what interest revenue is now, which we'll talk more about in budget amendments, then the IRS will come calling. So right now, it is in our KeyBank checking account, essentially. We're not, yes, we're not going to invest it, because we don't want to deal with the IRS and violate arbitrage rules.
Me either, thank you.
The rationale, Councilmember, for that is interesting, is that these are, you know, municipal bonds that are tax-free. So the IRS objects to giving a tax break for the issuance of the bonds and then allowing us to use that to gain interest.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I just wanted, back to the enterprise fund, just want to clarify that if the enterprise fund were to go back into the general fund, we would still meet our, be above our 16.67 reserve, correct?
I want to.
For 2024.
We would still be above it, but not by much.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rockseger.
Has there been any kind of examination as to what effect this would have on the civic groups that put on some of the events, the higher costs of rental for the facilities?
Well, Councilmember, we haven't committed to higher costs or lower costs at this point, but we'd like to do the business plan in your packet identified for zero to 90 days to assess what are the facilities specifically and how could they be utilized. And I think the next part of that is the operating piece, starting to put into place, you know, what the fee structure should look like and what the real costs are in identifying a number of the issues market-related that Jeff mentioned. It would be our intent, ideally, in a perfect world, the success of the enterprise fund could guarantee subsidies for community groups wanting to put on events. That would be the ideal outcome. That would be the ideal, that would be the outcome we would seek.
But we haven't done the study first to gather what kind of effect it would have. Where, if we're put into the position of we're creating the enterprise fund, then we're automatically saying.
Just questions, sir. Just questions, please.
Excuse me.
Okay, all right. Any more questions? Seeing none, I will close the hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to pass draft ordinance number 23-051, establishing the 2024 annual budget for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Second. I have a second from Councilmember Pennington. Discussion, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
So I do have some comments that is going to include a motion, so would you like me to hold for other comments first, or would it be appropriate to do that?
Go as you see fit. You have the floor.
Okay. Pardon? So I had several discussions with the finance, both finance and admin, in regard to this budget, and I have several concerns that really couldn't be resolved for 2024. So the line items of concern, though, I do want to say, they didn't come to the surface until August 2023, really, until everybody, you know, it all kind of commingled together. So kind of late in the year to recognize where some of these things were. So I brought a list of revenue generating ideas to the table, but really, none of those could be effective for 2024. Everything would include investment, capital investment. There wouldn't be any, any, enough realized with any of those ideas to have any effect on 2024. So consideration of, you know, reducing services is always, is also challenging for 2024. So it's too late to do anything tangible and significant for this budget cycle as it is, and we're still in the black and within our reserves for 2024. So this is not a panic mode, right? But there's deep desires for additional services, officers in particular. I want to say that every single time I talk about the budget. So not completely satisfied with the combination of strategies. So before considering final passage of this budget, I want to move to create an ad hoc finance committee in the first quarter of 2024 in order to explore opportunities to create revenue and reduce expenditures.
Second that motion.
Councilmember Steinmetz has seconded it. So we're going to be discussing this motion before we go to the other, the budget discussion. So any discussion in that regard? Councilmember Harris.
Can you elaborate a bit on the purpose, just the tasks of this ad hoc committee?
Well, for one, it is an ad hoc committee, which would mean we don't have to spend time codifying it to make it last year after year after year. Its specific task is to examine line items and possibilities that we can enact, because we aren't in the red in our projections until 2025 and after. So we, but if we start early, it gives us some time to, to examine all sorts of options on the table, not only for generating revenue, but altering services. Does that help?
Well, not really, because a finance committee, to me, means auditing, you know, and so I get that, but what you're just, you're talking about revenue generation, which is, to my mind, you know, more, you know, business planning and economic development. And so I'm not trying to be that parsing guy, but I think that this, I actually have strongly favored having a finance committee, a permanent finance committee since forever. We actually used to have one. And I think it would have, I think it would have provided the clarity on the problems of the, this event stuff years ago. But to my mind, a finance committee is about, you know, providing some ongoing education of the budget, which is a wonderful thing. But ad hoc to me means, okay, we have this quick task that goes away, and I'm, I'm not hearing it being well-defined what the task is. I'm not trying to be difficult, I just, I honestly don't get it. If it's, if it's business opportunities, that's, that's good, but I, again, I just, deciding this stuff on the, it's, it's too big a thing to decide on the fly like this, at least for me, so.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, I want to, I want to add on to that. The way I see it is what you're really proposing is that we look at the 23 through, 25 through 28 years, and we see what the possibilities are as far as revenue generating possibilities, as well as if we couldn't come up with those, what might be the options for, what would be cut? Because essentially, we need to balance the budget and make a 16.67%. So this ad hoc committee, I assume, would be a mixture of possibly council members, maybe community members and so forth, and obviously, we could refine that later. But in this general concept, what we're doing is we're going to talk about it and address it in the, in the first part of the year to assist us in the 2025 and beyond budget. Is that what you're really, is that, did I clarify that right?
Exactly. With finance and, and community members, I think community members is wise. Somebody said earlier in the evening, when you've got a community buy-in, there's a community, community participation creates community buy-in. And if we have red projections, it's worth a close examination to see what we might be able to find to reduce those, the red. I'm, without this, I'm pretty uncomfortable here.
Okay, so is there any more questions or comments? I'm going to go to Councilmember Pennington, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Harris, and then you, Councilmember Nutting, and then you, Councilmember Steinmetz.
So thank you, Deputy Mayor, for introducing this. I think this speaks to what I spoke to a couple of weeks ago, when I talked about the revenues versus expenses, and at some point, you know, you'll have to make some really hard decisions, as we did a few years back. What this does is this takes a look at that, it's, I think it's a proactive approach to looking at the future. And, and, you know, it's always tough to forecast revenues and that, but certainly, if you're, and I spoke to not forgetting the lessons that we learned from a few in 2017, and not forgetting to memorialize that and to educate future council members. I think having this ad hoc committee, and whether it becomes a standing committee later, you know, we certainly be up to the next council. But I, I thank you for bringing this forward. It's important not to forget where we came from. We're sitting in a pretty good place. We, through the finance folks, they're projecting some, some negative balances in the future. And by, by looking at this now and beginning that now, you're not, you're not having to, like I pointed to the back row before, you're not having to put those folks on furloughs and go without pay. You're not having to lay people off, you're not having to do all of those things. You're taking a wise, proactive approach. And, and as I see this ad hoc committee, again, it could come into a permanent committee, it could expand potentially a little bit, but I think that's important that you're taking that step now. I think it's a wise decision, and so I'll support your motion.
So then I had, Councilmember Harris, you were next. Councilmember Nutting.
This is right up there with the communications consultant thing. Everything ad hoc, especially when it comes to planning, you either, you know, this, to me, is like reactive. And as a city, we have to stop being reactive. If you want to engage in better planning and better ongoing management of the budget, I'm all in. But this is, again, it's like the communications consultant thing, it isn't. The whole ad hoc idea is just misguided. I would respectfully ask that you, if you want, in fact, this is something that should be a decision of the next council. Creating any kind of committee at the tail end of the year and binding that into the next council, I just, you know, it is a noble sentiment, but it is bad management. Thank you.
I think I had Councilmember Nutting, and then Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Deputy Mayor, for introducing this. I think it's a great idea, being part of the council that had to look staff in the eye and tell them to take furloughs, and being part of the council that had to deal with the 2.5 million dollar shortfall. I think, although, yeah, I think it's a great idea that we take a look at it, starting now, and I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
You know, one of the things we learned about in this budget process is that we have a problem coming. It's not here now. It will be, and it will be in another year. We need to start figuring out how to address that. That's the point of this committee. We have structural positions, structural expenditures that don't match up to the structural revenues. We need to fix that. We need to fix that for the 2025 budget, and hopefully, it stays in place for the 26th, 27th, 28th, et cetera. This is, this is the best way to start doing it. If we're going to do that, we need council. If we're going to do that, we need council buy-in and we need community buy-in. And this is how you create that, um, by creating an ad hoc committee to address those particular issues. The other side of that coin is that same committee will look at things that we can cut, services that people don't want anymore. And that's how you start addressing and bringing those two things into balance. And that's what we need to do because we can see the problem coming, you know? Yeah, it's a truck. Are we going to step out of the way? I hope we do, you know? We can't just go around promising to, uh, you know, 12 new police officers all the time and have no way to pay for it. We got to address that, and that's exactly what this committee does, and I'm going to support it.
Deputy Mayor Buxton and then you, Councilmember Oxger.
I do want to clarify, uh, that this is a response to, also to community concern last time. I, I'm, um, I don't really relish the idea of this being projected as, um, some kind of schemey, uh, knee-jerk response. This, the community was concerned. I mean, this, this is in response to some of the community response that I not only read out in social media, but here in this room in regard to seeing some of these line items. It has made me uncomfortable. The reasoning for ad hoc is not just, I don't, I don't know what's being assumed about the motion. I just know I'm trying to be as responsible as I can. And if I just raise my hand to pass a budget with all this red stuff, you know, the projections, I don't feel comfortable with that. And so this was the only thing I could think of that made me say, listen, I'm going to raise my hand for this, but I'm going to do something about it. The best thing I know to do about it, the thing that can be actually worked right away. And so if this is a successful recommendation, absolutely, why would you not codify something that works? So, but we'll just, I mean, we're trying to pass a budget here. So this is helping my comfort level and hopefully the communities as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxger.
I appreciate the sentiments, but I'm concerned about the ad hoc committee nature in that, that, uh, uh, I believe that the ad hoc committee, uh, uh, operation has not operated with the same transparency that, uh, other committees have. Uh, I, for example, the rules of procedure, that was not very transparent at all. You had, you had committee meetings that, uh, public input was not allowed. And it was, they were off-site with no kind of, of recording or anything so that anybody could, could, uh, follow along or view what was going on. So, um, I would ask, is there some way that we can put this? Either, either solidify the, uh, public access and the transparency, uh, to the, the committee you're trying to propose? Or, uh, cause I, if it's, if it's going to be operated the same way we did with the, the council rules of procedure, I think you're just inviting more controversy because that was not an, not a transparent process.
Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I would be open to saying, um, part of this is that we, it's predicated on, uh, the invitation to co, to the community be part of it, to the community to be part of the committee. Would something like that help? If we said, okay, let's, as part of this, that you say, part of the deal is an ad hoc finance committee, which includes, I don't, I, I don't know.
All right.
Is that too much in the weeds? So.
Point of order, Mayor. I, I think the motion on the table is to create an ad hoc committee.
Yes, yes, and, and the details of it, the details of it can come later. I, I, I agree with you. Just a sec, just a sec. I have, I have City Manager Mathias, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, for staff, there is no consideration of furloughs, period. Okay? So that's mentioned as an option. No, that's not an option. It's not on the table. I think the thing that's important, you know, we support the, the council wants to create an ad hoc committee. That's great, and certainly something would be of value. But I want to point out, I called up this general fund forecast, lest we forget, okay? Everything in green there, ending fund balance, we're in the green. We've got several million dollars through, even through the out-years in the fund balance. The issue is, are we consistent with the goal of having 16.67% of the general fund expenditures in fund balance? And that's where you start to see in 2025, 2026, with diminishing amounts each year, right? You see that we're not meeting that standard. But that standard is far above being at zero or being negative. So there is no urgency, there is no crisis, there is no exceeding problem with this that can't be resolved through some very thoughtful deliberation, which the council is suggesting and which we support. But I just want to point that out. We're fine right now. And we're fine, and, and the shortfall is based on the standards the council has established and the expectations the council has established to meet targets that assure us of solvency. That's the issue. The issue isn't solvency in general. We're fine. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Uh, again, I understand, uh, the, the, there is oftentimes, there is a tendency to want to do something or to look like one is doing something. And, um, we are legally, we're elected to address the budget. And at the risk of sounding, uh, community input is great, but not in budgeting. Okay? Sorry. Um, basically, the budget is complicated. It takes a long time to study, and, uh, the, the, the path forward is to have the members of the council have better communication with the staff and have more meetings of economic development and municipal facilities and so on, and, uh, establish a permanent finance committee. But doing anything reactive and just having members of the public show up and, and then, you know, run them through, um, one-time money and everything, it looks wonderful, okay? But it is an inefficient mechanism. The path forward is, is to have basically the council having more eyes on the budget month to month with finance, and that's the per, purpose of having a standing finance committee, which basically all the other cities do, C-TAC, TUCWILA, and, um, you know, but this is simply, there, there is, actually, I agree with the city manager. I just don't think there's any, there's, you know, the, I don't want to create this panic situation and do something, uh, that makes things worse. So that's just my, you know, measured thing, 25 years writing accounting software and companies and so on, yeah.
Council, Councilmember Pennington?
Yeah, I didn't want to infer to staff that there was furloughs coming. I, my point was, is they made the sacrifice, and, and the sacrifice was due to, um, way prior years of, of the budget shell game that, that the, the city operated under. And so, um, I, it's a proactive approach to making sure that, that we don't end up in the same spot that we did a few years ago. And, um, I think community input into budget is important because you're paying the bill, folks.
All right. I think it's time to move on the motion.
I see it.
You, you, go ahead, Councilmember Oxger, then we'll take the vote.
I still have trouble with the fact that, you know, if we approve this as an ad hoc in the way we've been doing it, there is not the transparency. We need to have the public have their eyes on the process. You, we can debate as to, you know, how you're going to take input and all of that, but I, I want to assure that the public is going to be able to watch what's going on and follow what we're doing and be able to, to comment. And as we have operated the ad hoc committees in the past, that opportunity is not, not always there.
Right. Point noted. I'm going to go ahead and get, take a vote on the motion to form an ad hoc committee with details to be discussed later. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Oxger. That motion passes. Okay, now we're back to the actual, the 2024 preliminary annual budget for discussion. Who would like to go first in any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
I would like to make a motion to set aside $100,000 for, uh, an increased IT budget specifically to, uh, create a proper website and proper public engagement. I also do not have the details to be worked out later, but I want the money set aside for the various things that I know the public wants.
So do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. City Manager, do you have a comment on that before we discuss or take a vote?
Yeah, I just think council is aware that the report back from our communications consultant is imminent, and I would encourage council to await that input to the council to determine what's the appropriate scope and future actions and all of that. So I'm not opposed to the allocation of money for IT, but I just think that, um, there's an other piece of information here that's important to consider before council takes any action.
Councilmember Harris.
While I appreciate the concern, it seems to me that, um, you know, you want to set aside the, basically, I think these needs are so obvious to the public that, um, I feel pretty comfortable, um, in this one instance with a TBD, what you call placeholder kind of a thing. So, yeah.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Oxger.
I have to agree. The, the, uh, the problem here is by not putting anything with regard to communications into this budget is, again, and the, the comment was brought up earlier that we, we would come back with a, uh, budget revision, uh, in order to accommodate it. That means, you know, we're always told that, okay, if you want to do something different, something that's in the budget has to go. If this is, if our policy is, if this is what we're saying that is important to us, communications has to be in the budget, and we have to be addressing it and not have it competing. And with, you know, other already budgeted items that we're going to have to sit there and choose. This is already policy. We're going to do this.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just confused by this because $100,000 from where? Set aside from where? There's, there's no, there's no thought process here. This is the, uh, the knee-jerk reaction that was just complained about. Want to appear like you're doing something. But, um, you know, at least, this is not even establishing a committee to look at it. The promise has been made that once we have all the data, that we will come back with a budget revision to address that. And I think that's sufficient, and I support that.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Not to beat a dead horse, but if I was going to set aside any amount of money for anything, it would be for an officer. So I, I appreciate the communication, and I will double my efforts to even work communication for me. But if we're going to do something like that, then I would vote for something else. Thanks.
I'm going to go ahead, and then I'll call on you, Councilmember Harris. I am one that's committed to what the results of the consort communications, you know, analysis is. Once we get that, then I'm committed to finding ways to take those recommendations and implement them and look at, look at different aspects of the budget, if that's necessary, to put those in effect. But we want to do it smartly, and we want to know the list. We don't know what the recommendations are going to be, so let's wait till we get them before we do something like this. Go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
Well, uh, like I said, um, you know, having worked in the field, um, A, I know where it's going to come from. It's going to come from the city manager's department, and so, um, how that gets worked out, that's where it gets worked out. And, uh, B, um, again, I'm relatively confident, um, that the things that the public wants, various apps and improvements to, uh, the, the web, even recording these meetings, um, you know, they're not rocket surgery. So, um, I feel pretty comfortable in, uh, putting that placeholder, uh, and that any, if the, if consort didn't come back with that type of, uh, investment, in fact, more, I would be, really feel like we had not chosen the right company, which I'm sure we have. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion before I take a vote on the motion? So all of those in favor of adding $100,000 for IT, raise your right hand. I see, I see Councilmember Harris, I see Councilmember Oxger, all those opposed, Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Council, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. The motion fails 2-5. Further, further discussion on this budget? Councilmember Harris.
I will be voting against the enterprise fund. I think it is putting the cart before the horse. Basically, we, I, in fact, I, I fully support the idea in principle. However, the, the, the path forward is to do a business plan and find out the market opportunities. And, uh, before you start borrowing the money from the swim fund, because the truth is, we have a really ancient grid throughout this city. I am concerned about that. And, and I think there will be a strong, I'm not saying we won't have the greatest council in the world, but I think there will be a strong, uh, incentive in three years to go, well, you know, we really haven't given this whole events planning thing of, you know, a real honest try, and then to extend the loans out, um, uh, another year, and then another year. We should do the market analysis. We should find out what the opportunities are. And then happy to vote for the loan, okay? But don't loan money and pay interest on it before you actually have a business plan where you can talk about the expectation of revenue. It is a wonderful thing, Mr. Friend, having identified the issues with accounting over the years. They're very real. I, one of the first things when I got on the council was I showed people all the different websites we've got, you know, competing, uh, basic, uh, events and services that weren't working together, the food trucks don't know about, um, you know, scheduling. That all could be, uh, done through an events planning system. But again, don't borrow money and start paying on things until you have a plan to start making the money. Thank you.
Any further discussion before I take a vote on the, the original motion we set for the public hearing? Seeing, seeing none. This, the motion is to pass draft, draft ordinance 23-051, establish the 2024 annual budget for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton. It's, it's a 7-0 vote. I'm sorry. I didn't even need the name. All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to, um, the 2023 annual budget amendments, I now open that public hearing.
Hey, uh, 2023 annual budget amendments. So I've heard the, uh, budget is described as a plan. Budget amendments are when, uh, you've deviated from that plan or something comes up that, you know, you didn't expect because you can't predict the future. First slide is budget adjustments overview. Uh, this is, uh, from the Washington State Auditor's website. Budget compliance is determined at the end of the fiscal period. Therefore, amendments may be done at any time during the fiscal period, but cannot be done after the fiscal period. So, um, like I said, sometimes you make plans, uh, things happen that you don't expect. But the state allows us, uh, in any city or county, uh, or local government to make amendments, uh, that can ensure that, uh, we are complying with the budget. that can ensure that we are complying with the budget. The packet has the budget amendments in it, all of them. I can't list all of the amendments in the, in the slide presentation, but I do have the highlights of the revenue and expenditure amendments in general, not with dollar amounts, which, but they are in the packet. Budget amendments, if we look at the general fund, there are revenue increases, revenue increases for sales tax because sales tax is outperforming what we projected. Franchise fees for solid waste, that one was under budgeted, I think about 650,000, and it's already in the 900,000, so we're going to make that adjustment. There's transfers into the general fund from the ARPA fund. Their court received 250,000 this year, as was the plan, but the budget only had 150, so we just want to bump that up 100,000 so that it matches what the plans were for ARPA. And then police, there are ARPA funds that pay for two police officers and a crisis response specialist. We've been transferring in the funds to, to pay for that, and we just need to adjust that up. And state grants, court had a state grant that we want to account for as far as intergovernmental revenue. In the general fund still, expenditure increases. First one is for police salaries and benefits. So there was negotiations with the police guild in 2022. However, the contract wasn't actually signed until 2023, but the effective date of the contract was January 1st, 2022, which necessitated us to make a payment for what the city owed the officers for 2022, according to the contract, and that was about $644,000 for that payment. Along with that contract was a brand new pay, pay structure for the officers, new salary tables, and just a lot of other things. So the budget that was worked on last year before the contract was done, now it will capture that new pay structure. So that amount, I think, in total of budget amendments was about nine, nine, it's, including both of those items, the retro payment and the new pay structure, the amendment that's recommended is $900,000 total. There's a transfer out to the municipal capital projects fund because in the capital improvements plan that was adopted, there is, for the North Bulkhead, $543,000 of general fund money. I'm not, I doubt that 543 will be transferred. Right now, it's about 215,000, but there might be other invoices, and we want to make sure that we're budgeting for what was approved in the capital improvements plan. There's also emergency economic relief grants related to the E. coli event, and the grants that were given to small businesses in relation to that. And there was a remodel of the room we're in. There's the court remodel, it was about $177,000. So aside from the general fund, we have other funds, and these are the revenue increases that can be found in that section in the packet. Interest revenue, this, we had mentioned this earlier. So in, when interest rates were much lower over the last few years, for example, in our local government investment pool, we'd get like $1,500 a month. Right now, we're getting like $75,000 a month. So it's just, we're getting a lot more interest revenue than we had in the past, so we wanted to kind of call that out and have that in the budget amendments. The building permits and the development fund are doing, outperforming what they were budgeted to do. And then we also, of course, have $25.1 million of bond proceeds that we'd like to capture. That in the budget is showing that is coming into the debt service fund and the Marina Fund. Hey Jeff, I appreciate your optimism, but I think it's 7,500 a month versus 75,000? No, it is 75,000. 75,000 a month in interest? Okay, my mistake, thank you. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's why it's fun to look at it every month. And if you look at the numbers in the, yeah, if you look at the numbers in the packet, you're like, really? 200,000 more interest revenue in the Marina Fund? But that's actually the case. Expenditure increases for the other funds, there's a lot of, funds transfer money between themselves. So the ARPA fund is one fund that's, it does pay for certain projects itself, but then it's also involved in sending money out to other funds. As I mentioned before, the ARPA fund sends money to the general fund to pay for police. It also sends money to the equipment rental replacement fund to pay for, you know, police cars and other equipment or other vehicles. And then to waterfront zone, and the waterfront zone is because there were a few costs related to the ferry, even though the ferry service did not occur, and I think it's like 40,000 or something like that. So there was some usage of that. And then transfers out the 2023 LTG bond debt service fund. That is, there were bond issuance costs that we need to capture. There's been an engineering invoice already for, I think it's 100, over $100,000, and so we want to make sure that, you know, we're in compliance with the budget and capturing those costs. WCIA insurance, that was a case where it was just under budgeted. It was budgeted at six, I think 650,000 in error, and it was about 850,000 after we paid it. Vehicle replacement, man, I had all these now that I, now I'm just drawing a blank. Oh, that is the ARPA vehicles that we want to capture, the expenditures in the equipment rental fund. And then there was ramp replacement at the Marina that we also want to capture in the budget. That will ensure that we are under budget. So total numbers here, general fund, revenue increase of budget amendments would be, what, 1.6 million, the expenditure increase, 1.7 million. And then for the other funds would be 27 point, about 27.4 million, and of course, that's largely a bond proceeds. And then expenditure increase, about 1.9 million. And of course, the details are in the packet with, on schedules with footnotes. And this is the suggested motion.
It doesn't appear that anybody signed up to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to sign up to speak? Second time, is there anyone who wishes to sign up to speak? Third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to, that didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll move to council. This is for questions only. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Jeff. Can you elaborate a little bit on that 75,000 a month in interest? Like, what is the source of all of that wonderful, wonderfulness?
I think we have in our local government investment pool, I think it's about $18 million. So interest rate, I can't pull the interest rate up off the top of my head, but every, the beginning of every month, I check that balance, and it has been in the 60,000s every month, and then there, we had an investment for $2 million, which we did not reinvest, and we put it in the LGIP, which increased the balance up to about 18 million, which resulted in the interest being about 75.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, I'm just asking this, basically, you know, what comprises that, that fund? Where, where does, where does it flow from?
Okay, so the, the cash?
Just, just an example, not, I mean, not a whole process, just, just like one?
You mean where you would find it on, on the books?
No, just where, where it comes into the city, from like what agency?
Okay, so it is the Department of the Treasury, and so what the LGIP is, or the local government investment pool, is it's a pool which local governments can put their cash in there, invest it, and then earn, you know, interest on it. So, and then the interest earnings are stronger because you pooled your money together. So therefore, our account that we have with them is, like I said, $18 million in earning strong interest. So does that answer your question, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, you know, just more for the public, basically, how the money gets in there to, you know, start generating?
Keep the question, sir, please.
I did ask a question. I just, how does the money get into the account?
Yeah, but then afterwards, you were giving a, a point or an opinion. So this section's, you, you're welcome to do that in the discussionary period.
And I'd add, that's part of our cash management as well. So if you're looking at, say, the, the annual financial statements or a financial report for the city, there's cash and investments in different funds. But of course, as far as our bank goes, it's not divided by, you know, our funds, it's just in our bank. And so we manage a balance in our key bank account, which is a checking account essentially, to make sure we cover payroll, cover our expenses, and it's our judgment, if we have excess cash over that need, that we, we invested in the local government investment pool. We also have other investments that, when they mature, we usually reinvest that in other bonds, but in, if we feel we need some more cash, we don't, and we can take that money and put it in the LGIP. And the advantage of the LGIP is, if we need the cash, we can pull it out.
No, you went above and beyond.
Okay, I just want to answer your question.
No, 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 that's, that's, that's really good. Thank you so much.
Any more questions, Councilmember Harris? No? I have, I have two. So the general budget, basically, it looks like shifting through counts, you are only really in the net nets, about just a little over $120,000 between expenditures and revenues, is that correct? And in the multiple departments, when you take out the bond, you're talking about $400,000 roughly about shift between expenditures and revenues, right?
That's correct.
So is this pretty atypical in a budget, budget year to just have these small numbers per little department here and there, just to make the adjustment?
I'd say it depends on how well the budget was put together and how well it aligned with actuals. So I'd say my predecessor Beth Ann did a good job budgeting, which necessitated fewer budget amendments, but of course, things happen, and so we captured those things, and then I think that's pretty typical.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. I will now close the public hearing. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 23-054 relating to municipal finance, amending the 2023 annual budget adopted in ordinance number 1764.
Second.
And I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Discussion. Councilmember Oxger.
As I expressed earlier this year, I remain concerned about the manner with which we allocated the, or, yeah, it would be allocated, yes, the emergency economic relief funds. I don't think it was appropriate the way we handled it, and so I don't want to give the impression that I think this is the proper way to operate.
Any other comments or discussion before I take a vote? Seeing none, we will be voting to enact draft ordinance number 23-054 relating to municipal finance, amending the 2023 budget, annual budget adopted in ordinance 1764. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Oxger. Motion passes six one. All right, we're going to move on to new business. This is draft ordinance 23-068, spending restriction on use of one-time money for 2024, and Jeff, you're up again. I know you're jacked about that. You may proceed, sir.
No slides for the next four agenda items. As discussed in the budget presentation, part of the 2024 budget is retaining one-time sales tax and BNO revenue in the general fund. What was budgeted is about 175,000 of one-time sales tax and $90,000 of BNO, but of course, whatever the actuals are, are what would be retained in the one-time in the general fund.
Do you have a motion? It's, okay.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 23-068, amending DMMC 3.100.020, and lifting the restriction on the use of one-time revenue in the general fund budget for the year 2024.
Second.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Discussion. I'm going to start with Councilmember Harris, and I'll go to you, Deputy Mayor Buxton, and then you, Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you. This is somewhat rhetorical, but this is why I was opposed to the whole, the ad hoc finance thing, bringing the public into this, they will not have the historical understanding, they will not have the vocabulary of one-time money or REIT I versus REIT II and so on. It will simply be overwhelming to them. That is not a disparagement, it's that the public are not accountants, and certainly not municipal accountants. And unfortunately, we have used one-time money, and we're going to keep on doing it because it's irresistible, and somehow strategically, we're either going to have to learn to live without it, or we're going to have to find a much more transparent and sustainable way to say, hey, this is just the dealio, so that we don't have to keep having ad hoc discussions every, you know, a, a, a finance director who retired many years ago made, it just occurred to me, made a very prescient comment, when you're retiring, sometimes you say things, you know, with candor. She said, you know how we seem to have this black swan event every seven or eight years here? And maybe we should start planning like we're going to have a black swan event every seven or eight years, because they're not one in a million. You know, we don't know what they are, but they happen every seven or eight years, and we should start acting like that. That's it.
I believe Deputy Mayor Buxton, you were next, and then I see council, you'll go after Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the main reasons that I asked for this finance committee, is that the projections on, on one of the line items, it shows that we're, in our projections, we're going to still be doing this for at least four year, well, every year in our projections to 2028. And we do have, we did pass an ordinance saying that we would, we would not use one-time money for structural type revenues, but that's what we're doing, and we've done it, this will be what, the third or something year in a row, and it's projected out to do it to help us stay at least the green, the one green line. So yes, absolutely, we need to do it again, but that's what the finance, that's what the finance committee was for. I see the absolute necessity of doing it this year, but I want to see if there's a way that we don't have to, that we can go back to using one-time money for one-time expenses. And I don't like doing this, but it's necessary. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Nutting, then Councilmember Steinmetz. I see you for your second time, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to comment that I, I don't like doing this. It's necessary for this year. We've done well over the last couple of years, and it's challenging for me to even make the motion, but to keep the city on the right path, I made the motion tonight, and I just urge us to figure out how to get back to putting this one-time money into one-time, into one-time projects. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Well, I haven't been on the council long enough to get addicted to this drug, and I'm not going to. So I'll tell you right now, we need to figure out how to solve the problem, make sure we're not using one-time money for ongoing expenses, and if that means we got to cut some things back, all right, let's do it. But, you know, this particular budget, we need to move forward on, unfortunately, you know, it became clear to me in the discussion that we didn't start trying to address some of these issues early enough in the process. That's one of the reasons why I want a finance committee in the beginning of next year to start looking at those, because if we need to do certain things to fix that process, we need lead time to do it. You know, government operates at the speed of government, and that's sometimes horribly slow. You can't just make corrections, okay? So we do have some one-time money that is available this year to bridge the gap. I'm going to support it. We're not going to do it again. I'm not going to vote for it again. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, your second time.
So you know those episodes of Star Trek where? So you know those episodes of Star Trek where the ship blows up? And then, you know, they go back in time and they wonder, you know, how they could do things differently? And yet it keeps blowing up, and they go, if I did this different, and, you know, um, it's like, the council back in the two thousands, they were not incompetent. They were not asleep at the wheel. They were none of the disparaging things that people often say. Um, they were people doing their best in a very challenging situation, and they took money where they could, just like anybody who works at Walmart or whatever and is living paycheck to paycheck, okay? You take the payday loan, you do the thing you wish you didn't have to do to survive. And, um, they did make cuts and, um, you know, and so I'm just trying to say that the, the gods punish hubris. Um, and so saying never has never been a great policy here in Des Moines. And so the whole ad hoc thing, again, I'm done beating on it, but I'll just say, I have heard this over fifteen years, people saying, I'm never going to do this again. Oh, it's unfortunate, but I got to do it now and everything. And, um, the structural change is to, uh, have an ongoing, uh, finance committee. And really, we're not doing anything different this time. It may feel like it, but, um, yeah, I think everybody who's worked here a long time can feel the echo. It's not necessarily history repeating itself, but there's a rhyming kind of a melody going through my head. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxegar.
Well, Councilmember Steinmetz, I appreciate your, uh, pledge to not do it again. Uh, my position is I'm not going to do it the first time.
Um, I want to make a comment. The last three years, we've had COVID, a major epidemic that happened the last time, a hundred years before that. It devastated our economy, our shipping, everything, and everybody needs to realize that. And a way I could explain it that I think people would understand is you've got your household budget, and you're paying the bills, and your grocery bill went from two-fifty to three-fifty, your power went up twenty-five dollars, et cetera. Now you've got that vaca- Hawaii vacation money, right? But to make ends meet, sometimes you have to take some of that to make ends meet, and that's what we're doing here. That's the simplest analogy I have. So I'm going to support it. I don't like it either. And I, and just in the household budget, I want to go to Hawaii. But if I got to pass it a year to make ends meet, make sure we do all the things we do, that's what you're going to do. Anyway, you had something, city manager, you wanted to add?
Um, just to echo what you said, Mayor. And also, so COVID was an, what you call in economics, an exogenous event, something outside the control of us. And we responded to it as a city financially, in terms of staffing. I think that the strategy being to try to retain as many services as possible for when we emerged from COVID, we were able to function and operate as a city government should. I think this past summer with the parks department and the fireworks, the drone actually, and all the different things that have happened, that that was a pretty smooth transition back to relative normalcy. And so, yeah, we're facing challenges based on COVID. I don't think we're basing, we're facing challenges based on process or timing or not alerting people to concerns. I think everyone was aware of the impacts of COVID on our budget and on the finances. And we were trying to cope with that. And now, I think all things considered, the hole that's dug for us is a small hole, to be honest, as opposed to what happens in many other jurisdictions. Just wanted to point that out. It was an external factor that we had to respond to. As the mayor said, we retained expenditures that were in excess of revenues, and now we have to pay the piper. But the fact of the matter is, we were able to retain for our community and our citizens many services, public safety, parks, other things, um, that are essential, roadways, uh, you know, seasonality of weather, clearing the roads, all those kinds of things continued to happen. And we continue to pay for those. So I just want to make the point, I, I don't think this was, this, for me, and I'm probably being defensive of our staff, but it wasn't a budgetary process issue. It was a reality issue in the world that we had to cope with.
Any other discussion before I take the vote on this, this ordinance? Okay, I see, so this is draft ordinance twenty-three dash zero-six-eight, amending DMMC three dot one-zero-zero dot zero-two-zero and lifting the restriction for one-time money for the budget year of twenty twenty-four. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Harris and I see Councilmember Oxegar. The motion passes five-two. All right. Moving on to draft ordinance twenty-three dash zero-five-five, establishing an enterprise fund entitled Events and Facilities Rental Fund. I don't know if you have any more to say, other than the presentation you provided earlier.
More to add, um, but this ordinance would establish the enterprise fund number four-twenty, uh, for the events and facility rentals. And as part of the budget discussion, it was, uh, part of, in the twenty twenty-four budget.
Discussion, go ahead, I mean, motion, Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve draft ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-five-five, adding a new section to the chapter three-point-five-two DMMC, establishing enterprise fund entitled Events and Facility Rentals Fund.
You'll have a second. Second, I have a second for Councilmember Pennington, discussion. Councilmember Harris.
Uh, I would be, well, yeah, you know, no, I actually don't, I'm done.
Councilmember Oxegar.
Uh, I move to, uh, uh, postpone this until after the new year and the new council is set, seated.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Harris, discussion.
This is, you know, we talk about, uh, adding a new, uh, process here. And we haven't, uh, I think, really, you know, figured out exactly what we're going to do with it. I think we need some time to look at it. I think that, uh, this is something that going forward, that the, that the new council should take a look at. And so, um, I would urge my colleagues to, let's just put this over until the first of the year.
Councilmember Harris.
Um, so I'm sort of struggling to support that. I mean, I, I, I agree in principle, but my objection, as I stated before, is that there needs to be some sort of business plan and market analysis done. And my, I guess my intuition would be that that would be done by the Economic Development Committee, maybe. Um, but since, um, I don't know when they would meet and when it would be on their agenda, um, you, when you suspend something, you have to, I believe you, you can't just put it out there. You have to provide a specific date or some, you know, frame. And since I don't know when that business plan or market analysis could be complete, um, so to my mind, the, the, there's nothing preventing us from voting this down and simply bringing it back when there is the necessary information in place. Um, since staff have already done the work.
Okay, but you seconded the motion to, um, postpone this into twenty twenty-four. So that's the motion.
Well, no, I'm just, yeah, I second, I, I second it just to have, be able to have a discussion.
Any, any other discussion before we take a vote on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving this item to twenty twenty-four, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Oxegar, all those opposed. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. That motion fails one-six. Okay, we're back to the original motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those to approve, uh, the establishing the enterprise fund, please raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, I see Councilmember Steinmetz, I see Councilmember Nutting and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Harris, I see Deputy Mayor Buxton, and I see Councilmember Oxegar. The motion passes four-three. All right. Moving on to reallocation of the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Hey, um, as part of the twenty twenty-four budget, uh, there was repurposing of ARPA funds that were available. Uh, the total amount was one million, two-hundred-thirty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. So tho- those dollars would be, uh, directed to the general fund to support, uh, general fund operations.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Nutting.
Um, sorry. I move to approve the recommended reallocation of expenditures of unspent America Rescue, American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Second.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven-zero on the reallocation of ARPA funds. All right, moving on to item four, the interfund loan to support establishment of events and facility funds rentals. Any comments before I get the motion or, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, this is the interfund loan from the Surface Water Management Fund, uh, for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars at, uh, three percent interest, uh, for a term of three years. And, uh, total interest would amount to about forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the amortization schedule showing the payments is in the packet.
Any, Councilmember Nutting.
I move to enact draft ordinance number two-three dash zero-five-six, authorizing an interfund loan of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from the Surface Water Management Fund to the events, events and facilities rental fund to support the establishment of the new enterprise fund.
Second. And I have a second from Councilmember Pennington. Any discussion before we take the vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Harris, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Oxegar, motion passes four-three. That leads us to the next item, introduction of items for future consideration. This time is for the sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business council members can submit. Questions that are seek updates on previously discussed business with the city manager at the time. Do any council members have new business they would like to propose? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to call for an executive session under RCW forty-two dot three-zero dot one-one-zero F to receive and evaluate a complaint against a public, uh, employee. And, um, yeah. Uh, on, uh, just as background, um, the state legislature passed a change to the RCW last year, which prevents, um, discussing two items in a, a single executive session. Uh, without, you know, spilling the beans, um, based on what we covered at, on Tuesday and here, um, you have to call a separate executive session, um, to go into the area that I want to. And, uh, so, yeah.
Do we have a second? See a second for Councilmember Oxegar. All those in favor of his motion, raise your right hand. I don't think we can because it's executive session.
It's a future.
Yeah.
Future agenda.
For a future agenda. No, I, I understood it, he wanted to call it tonight.
An executive session, you have to have, it has to be declared as a, uh, you know, special.
If it's approved, if we approve that on this count.
It says G here, but he said F, so you.
Yeah.
And this is consideration for, I mean, point of mayor, sorry, point, point of order. This is consideration for a future agenda. It's, it can't be for tonight.
Yes, that would be a new order of business.
Yes.
So be for a future agenda.
I would like to call a special meeting to address this.
So I see, I got two, two members of the council, do I have a third? We do not, so it dies. All right. At this time, is there any other one, sir? At this time, the council will go into executive session to discuss performance of a public employee under RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one-one-zero, subparagraph one, subparagraph G. The executive session is expected to last thirty minutes. Council will be adjourning the meeting, uh, no, that's not right. No, the, 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 something happened with the language, excuse me. The, basically, the council will come back and there may be action taken. Oh, thirty minutes, so it would be, what would that be, eight fifty-three?